Um. Private calls. Five seventeen twenty twenty five. Village Ward, the whole meeting, um. Answers call home.
Dress me home, Matt. It's here.
Yeah.
Steve. Here, Steve, we're with you. And President Rowan.
Here. You got one. Okay. We're not live. The video recording will be available on the village's YouTube channel. Pursuant to the village, which reached the about Apollo County, because the village board is regular or is instead of. Thanks. Uh, Apollo. Not that I'm invited to all years for. Starts of state. If you have a comment on the agenda and participating. All right, those can't. Five. You said. Agenda. The appropriate time, all families will leave the agenda either. Take place, they're all moving reasons. We'll notify the speed. Next item on her agenda. The staff work continues regarding low speed, less of scooters. I'll ask your part, taking executives on lock. Her building partners to vice vice to present.
Good evening, President Rowan. Thank you very much. Uh, so I will provide you with a brief overview in the next few slides of details to pair town. To make it digestible is it can be very somewhat confusing, not just for our community, but all the surrounding communities based on state law. Um, maybe you find which uh village attorney Weiss will provide some legal detail. And uh and we'll both be able to answer questions should you have any. Um, as detailed in the exhaustive and somewhat exhausting memo that we provided to you. Uh, there is a significant amount of consideration for us uh as a village in regards to a state law or two state laws. That were penned most recently, taking effect in January first regarding low speed electric scooters and then also in that in twenty twenty eight. I'm sorry, twenty eighteen regarding uh e-bikes. Um, provided for you on this information here, this slide here, the most important thing is uh the takeaway from low speed electric scooters is they are. Defined as not traveling any in excess of ten miles per hour. And by state law, you must be eighteen years or older to operate them. Uh, on any public roadway. Specifically for a low speed electric bicycle, the distinction between the low speed scooter and the low speed electric bicycle. A bicycle is as uh would expect has pedals. But it has pedals and an electric motor where it gets very confusing is they are broken down in three categories. Category class one low speed bicycle uh can travel up to all three of them have seven, no more than seven hundred and fifty watts of power. Now, class one category low speed bicycle can travel up to twenty miles per hour and the motor assists you in pedaling. A class two low speed bicycle has pedals, but you don't need to pedal at all and the motor, you can simply use the motor in and of itself. Uh, the class three low speed bicycle, you need pedals. Uh, and however, the motor assists you into speeds up to twenty eight miles per hour. The distinction for all three of those is there's an age restriction. Uh, you must be sixteen or older to operate a class three low speed bicycle. Now, you've probably seen these since they become very popular all throughout town. Or we took note especially and and we were a bit surprised as a village and and regionally uh chiefs of police were also surprised when this came on the books in January first. Um, ultimately, the confusion was the intent of the state. We weren't necessarily sure what the intent of the state was. Uh, but the state enacted the low speed scooter again effective effective January first. Uh, went into effect, which was restrictive, had a myriad of restrictions, but the most important takeaway, again, the two takeaways were the the speed uh and the. Um, the age restriction. Municipalities regardless of home rule were allowed to enact their own more restrictive laws and as. These things became more plentiful on the streets and became more considered a nuisance and a safety consideration. Uh, as they're really popular with the youth. Uh, a number of different municipalities have put those into effect. In anticipation of trying to get ahead of it, uh, public safety in the village uh has worked with our community partners, most especially. Uh, District Thirty Five Schools to get really ahead of the problem, largely through education. Uh, we consider the optics of a lot of our, a lot of our. Um, the residents are minors. We're talking ten year olds, eleven year olds, twelve year olds riding these scooters. And I don't think anybody wants to see public safety performing traffic stops on uh on the roadway. To enforce uh which again, the state left us little opportunity, but to treat these as hazardous moving violations. Um, to write citations to minors, which again, we're very, very limited in what we can and can't do. If it's a traffic stop, it sets a a a series of uh events uh into place as mandated by state law. Documentation as a traffic stop, can we issue cite or can we even issue a a warning? Are we mandated and issue citations? Again, those are a number of different things that I don't think that necessarily the village uh or the residents want uh. Public safety and the law enforcement role to be taking a position on. So we really went aggressive on education. And again, our strongest partner is District Thirty Five Schools. So. Here's a list of a number of different things we've done uh in in we've had a number of different conversations to make sure there is a level set from all. Uh, all law enforcement heads throughout the region um and that internal that is both internal and external. Uh, we've conducted a number of different training modules for all public safety uh officers to ensure that everyone is well versed in as best as possible with this. A series of confusing laws um that highlighted District Thirty Five uh through Dr. Wang, working through her. Using utilizing their social media or own social media. Email parent uh emailing all the parents to their blasts and conducting uh handouts of specific uh bills, which are not bills, but. Uh, handouts, uh again flyers, you see it's depicted there, the actual flyer, the front and back. And then that was most importantly, the bike rack distribution. Uh, we felt, we felt that the best way uh and the most supportive way through this education effort was to specifically uh go to the bike racks every day while school is still in session. You have those individuals that are riding those scooters there, so we would affix a flyer to every single one of those. A flyer was put in the hands of every single student and sent home to their parents again for education efforts. Um, and and again, the pushing out, and this is uh the same flyer and the same information. And this is going to be incorporated in our bike safety program with uh with the littles as well. Um, lastly, uh, as far as a a park district partnership, again, sharing this information and pushing it out to the park district. And then we've been doing our own, as highlighted, our own e-news, e-news and social media. And we've even posted officers on foot uh to just do citizen contacts at key areas, most specifically at the Red Hen and the Walgreens, where most of our kids are going to congregate. And leave their bikes or leave their their e-bikes and leave their, as most especially the e-scooters there to make sure we gave a flyer to every single one. Um, we've noted initially, we've noted a significant decrease in in these uh the use of these, especially in the downtown business district. Uh, but that also could be coupled with the fact that school year is out, so you're not going to see as many kids in the downtown area. Um, for discussion now, again, just for your information is highlighted in the memo. Wanted to talk about um local efforts in the surrounding municipalities. So Deerfield led the way. Uh, Deerfield introduced their own ordinance as far as making sure they could uh they could restrict uh efforts or they could prevent. Minors from operating these in an unsafe manner and make sure they can really try to get ahead of the problem. Um, that was utilized, the most important thing is they they instituted a definition of a motor driven vehicle. That is an all encompassing, as I highlighted to you, those laws surrounding the use of an e-bike and and a low speed. A scooter can be kind of confusing, right? And again, it goes back to, there was initial confusion, does this? Does this also cover a little type spike, like the little car or whatever the case is? So in in truth, it did not, but there was still confusion in the eyes of the public and in the eyes of law enforcement. So. This put everything all together and is all falling under the motor driven vehicle um as highlighted in the memo. It also specified both Deerfield and Highland Park's uh mirroring um ordinance. No one under the age of eighteen without a driver's license is uh is able to operate one of these motor driven vehicles. Regardless of what type it is. Um, that really narrows it down to a sixteen year old or older and only if you're from sixteen to eighteen, you have to have a driver's license. So that puts it and gives opportunity for law enforcement to um to. Find accountability on that unsafe driving and any any traffic violations because they have to have. Um, in theory, they have to have uh comprehensive training, rules of the road, understanding the law and also, you know, elements of safety incorporated into that. Uh, of unique, then the second generation Highland Park's efforts, they've added in their ordinance. Um, use on private property, uh, they could enforce this law, uh, this ordinance. Um, on private property, provided it was adjacent to public property. And secondarily, and most importantly, if they had prior authorization from the merchant or the owner of that private property. Uh, to enforce those rules. So they say, for example, they have a significantly more um retail uh. Retail element to Highland Park. So say if there is a target or something that has a large lot that's adjacent to private property. If they go in ahead of time and have an agreement, they can enforce the law there as well, too. Um, and also in Highland Park, there's a prohibition on bike trails and and also in the last part, and perhaps the most important component. Is there is an adult accountability element of this. So not only can the mire who's operating this in violation of their ordinance be cited, but also the parent can be cited as well, too. Um, it I will, um, Northbrook is still working through their options of what they want to do. Um. Uh, they uh they're still working on internal discussion as far as how what pathway they want to go, if they want to have a mirroring or more restrictive ordinance. Um, however, Lake Forest, Glen Allen, Evanston will not each have their own uh similar ordinances. Uh, so this is something that's recognized throughout the community and all of our surrounding areas as a problem. Again, it goes back to, it was a bit of a surprise when this kind of went on the books. Um, and and there really wasn't an understanding of what the actual intent was on the state law. Uh, now, um, I, from my own personal assessment, professional assessment, I was initially very uh skeptical. About a local ordinance and the effectiveness of the local ordinance, if that will be as beneficial to Glencoe. Um, as was uh a a the the chief of um Deerfield. He and I both had kind of compared notes um. Since it went into effect, I had a a debrief with John Sliozas. And he has not only become a believer, but he's also made me a believer as well, too. Um, it really came down to, oh, sorry, it really comes down to the most effective thing is uh making contact and the uh making contact with the minors as they're operating those things. On the street um and and making sure that they immediately contact the parent on scene. And advise the parent, not only the the accountability efforts and, you know, the the prohibition for the minors. But also how it can have that uh secondary accountability in the parents. Um. Chief Sliozas has said they've had, um, they've had absolutely, they've not had to issue any citations. Uh, since they put it into effect, number one, and second, they've had almost one hundred percent compliance. Uh, so he was, he was pleasantly surprised and having that information delivered to me um. Also made me reconsider uh the the opportunity. Um, Highland Park in discussion with their chief, it's still too new and they don't have enough data um to direct, you know, to determine uh its effectiveness there. Sure. No, that's why. I'm sorry, that's by design, I'm just uh just going on and rambling. I haven't even been talking about e-scooters for the last five minutes. My apologies. Sure. So that said, uh. Sir, counsel.
So. I'm sort of. Law. It threw me back to a wish of possible. Because. And lots of ones are asking for figuring out how the it first blocks, look at laws. There's a. That should use. And it'd be no bikes. And. So you know. So you're one of those kids who are breaking up. So you pass a law that says, um. No, it's. Well, one, you got harvest trucks, you got animals, okay, we need animals, we need a lot of them. We can't go into real means. If nobody will be able to, that's what you can advise. Definitions now. And so we did this, this statute. Created a definition. For those who need e-scooters. It raises the question of all, whether what skin has heroes. Those will be ten miles. Or the best people in this, and if anyone's actually. Um, those are the ones that are supposed to be full, including ones that are located out of city, the line. Or even the city's own. Uh, which are limited, often to the inside. And. If you go to the dealership, most of these scooters, they will have. And the ability, then do not, and we've all had the sign necessarily of the definition for those who need e-scooter. So we have. You're you're big alternative in phrase, I mean, this law, one. It prohibits. Anybody who's aged at the age of forty or less speed scooter. Most of the people who ride these um tend to be into the age age. So you're prohibiting coming to the target, which audience, that's a value that it's all the raises um this. Maybe catch a lot of them doing this um. Fire leading the table. And then the fact that is. The. By this, it's inclusive of most of the spirits that you want. Um. That. In so. The only thing we keep in mind about the local code is that um. It is, it does create a whole, it is more of a soft version. In that. A local municipality cannot adopt and those rules that are. More. But they could adopt those in Washington. And so in the case of this, in the case of regulation e-scooters. And this policy, especially. Has the ability to. Add local premises that include digital regulations, which will be easier. And also really high. And um, so. In the. That. The communities that have been looking at this question have been struggling with the regular saying. To kind of allow this to all to. To just kind of, to the same spirited and just say, well, and the state was the men's have been for that. And it would be um. Or regulate these more in line with a, that other than. The village does have expensive detailed regulations. The village. And uh including. That we. If there's group providers. Wow, uh, that they have. Their. And it poses a, they was not definitely in mind regardless of. Um, if they violate the ordinance, then their violation is the. You could do the same. Of course. Every municipality that in. Though when you adopt regulation. You are taking on a. And making it a decision that this is a rule that we want not only to exist in the. And I think that Sean uh expressed in plenty of concerns that people have. Uh, interactions with. Say the children, um, you know. Protect them, we also don't want them to be playing. Um, they're in the. Citation, you take it around animals, uh, every time they go to. So these are the discussions are. If you have questions, um.
If I could add one more point. When the initial e-bike law was drafted in twenty eighteen, when you purchased an e-bike, it was pretty expensive, starting somewhere around fifteen hundred. The e-bike you purchased was clearly identified as a class one, class two or class three. That was it. Now, any e-bike you purchase or you can change that category just by punching a button, often even by Bluetooth. You can pick, you compare it to your phone and you can change it um at a given moment. Therefore, and they also sell stickers, they also sell stickers where you mark your bike. As a class one, it's really a class three, or someone uh on Amazon. So uh from an enforcement perspective, it's very difficult to discern. With, you know, without seizing a bike and then sending it to a lab and having someone test the bike, it's it's really prohibitive as far as enforcement on that. Um, I also want to share with you a very brief story that actually happened yesterday. Uh, we had a um fifteen year old who was riding an electric vehicle. Um, and mind you, it was not an e-bike, it actually, it was effectively an electric motorcycle. Um, he was trying to do a performance trick. Wheelie, uh, he failed, fell off the bike, uh, minor injuries were wrought from him, but that bike continued forward, struck another vehicle at a. Cost some significant damage to that vehicle, uh, no injuries from that drive. Of interest, however, when they looked at that bike itself, they checked the odometer and it logs the speeds that it can travel and it has traveled. And it had traveled earlier that day over sixty miles. And that's what's the capability itself. So we have to be aware of that. And and this, this was a child under the age of sixteen. Um, I think largely there is a, this, we've, we've tried to educate the public and parents as much as possible. But I think there is a accessibility, uh, because they're all. Uh, is is a concern, uh, which is why we're seeing so much of it and also a lack of knowledge as far as how truly dangerous they are. Uh, I know personally, I have one for my son years ago and the very first day he run in, I said, okay, I have to take it right. Because he had no wherewithal, he went right through, right through an intersection, many of the cars of the islands ran your son over. Um, so uh it it they are costly. Certainly.
Well. So. Only tribute. They. That I. Just now, as you look at this. And don't. Free, you know, first work. And I vote this. Yeah. Scheme. Correct. You know, I think we don't want to get in hurt. We don't want to. Basically. You know, our holy state of officers. Or children or parents, but. We don't want anybody hurt. Uh, and we're sure not to do. I am. Like she was, I'm certainly responding. To take advantage of our neighbors that have died. Um, because otherwise. We need faith. With our neighbors that got it, out of us. We can learn from what they are. Or what they, you know, period, they drive. I had right up to your bill or the death, because we're gonna relook at this. Um, which is common. Um. Sounds like. Very. For the opposite. Um. I guess. Really. But I said I'm gonna find follow. Of. Your field, Northbrook. Right at the next day, you know, I know. Everybody does get hurt with their victory. And the. We're not following you there and particularly if you're not factoring out most regulation. You weren't sure. You know. Okay. Um, so that's, so. I I think you should. Look at what. Your field's done, but we're purpose to get you in part on markets. And come up with. Something. Sensible. Similar. Because. I think we could do nothing but say this, this, uh, our goals. The treaty now, the speed statute. It seems like it's gotten invisible. It just won't do for us to spy, trade, somebody that's over ten miles an hour, say for shout, so there. So I think you should make it happen. Or turn it. Yeah. Try to work from. Your field or quote. I don't care, yeah, I think anybody else. Is about some smart, okay. Right, but smart. So. Any other. You know, you got a. Okay. Done.
Yeah. This can be very confusing. With secrets, so. And the growth change in the community is very, very confusing. So the current. If you have any, we had. And so. Look at this. This is like a game base. But the. The second thing I want to express is the ordinance for bringing schools on it's. Um, I have two branches of the business. And they, it's a, it's a, it's a, we, they had actually spelled we, we. Uh, and the parents, the parents who reinforce. And. How to. Control kids. So. Could just work on. Thank you.
Hey, um, other. Let me not say there's one other. We have. Your residents. And a lot of those residents, parents, this subject, it wasn't a deep subject, it was, is. When he was, he said, my thinking of adding our codes. You don't, worse existing code. In this particular. Our credit. Was. Group. Slightly. Should be single file. The rest of the enforcement. Um. When people are single file. If we had any incidents. Um. As a result of. Bicycle's not. Single file, because that resulted in a, a, accidents of. Car crashes, buses, buses, beer or whatever.
Uh, no presence, Rowan, aside from the incident I mentioned that took place yesterday, that was an electric vehicle. Um, prior to my appointment here, there was a single bicycle accident that resulted in a fatality, but that individual, uh, guy was his soul was riding by himself. Uh, struck a vehicle, uh, other than that, no, uh, there have been no documented incidents of uh individuals riding in in groups. Uh, not single file that resulted in a bike crash.
Say just for context. The village worked it, talked about its current ordinance structure. They had two scientists about. And at the time, the lead question about whether. Village's single file prescriptions were right, um, whether we should think about augmenting them. Uh, there were, there was one second community or like who were participating in these conversations, seeing. They have as well as a. Regular, recently, that maybe we're. Um, and there were discussions about the benefits of side by side or maybe the benefits of single file. Um, if there are issues that relates to. How like, are you using? Three, how do you people which are part of the public rights? Are state laws related to how. And. Be able to give the cycle, the cycleism. And we, we did work. All of the prescriptions. Um, and all of the time, decided. Any changes to the. That's certainly something we didn't take. File. Um, except for Molly, you're that is probably. At a conversation in the context of the book for talking. At a conversation in the context of the world we're talking. It may be. Perhaps. I trust. The structure has been silenced, make sure that. Have a, 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 and also being able to solve. And they'll take different, um, it's able to force a group as well. So, okay, I'm. Should we, this meeting changing our rules? Bicycle's right. Groups, they talk to each other, ours, um, they sort of, you take over. I think it's. Ordinance, because our public safety, obviously, stability. If we see some dangers, we do something about it. Most of it. All I know is there are. Sometimes they're not single file. And that's a previous thing, pictures, most of those. I guess I would honor, or to be. In favor of some pictures. But I want to mention. That. As we make additional ordinance with the subject, we have better. Open it, we're not, we're not able to enforce there at time. And it sounds like Chief Walker was saying, the goal is by to communicate with schools and parents. People know that you know, can. That if people are operated. Okay, but I think it sounds like we have to stand. See, I should do. And we will try this, and whether we pass, we'll do that, something will be our. Fine open, have a fix it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Safety record. Is turning. And don't. I don't think for. Who is turning that anyway? We will, we'll. Thanks for all the presentations. I thank you on our, to the whole community to review strategic plan, recording that for.
Thank you, President Rowan. Sorry. Thank you, President Rowan, I appreciate that. Just wanted to give a brief overview of our strategic plan, I'm sure everyone's aware of the strategic plan. Was adopted in December of twenty twenty four and it runs from twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven. We have four strategic goals, which include reliable infrastructure, economic vitality, resilient community, and a workplace of excellence. Along with the adoption of the plan, the board also approved a software solution with Invisio. To establish a progress tracking of the strategic plan. And this evening, I wanted to just provide a brief overview of the dashboard for your benefit to kind of solicit some feedback. And get your thoughts on that before we have a go live date of August. So just a, just a overview of Invisio, the software allows for progress tracking of of each goal and step. It enables our staff to generate quarterly progress reports, which is located in your packet this evening on the on the regular village board meeting. And it also allows for a public facing online dashboard to display key milestones to the community. And build public trust by showing visible updates of our plan progress. It identifies some challenges that staff or our elected officials or even the community might face in in in. Working through the strategic plan and any adjustments that we would make in in response to those challenges or issues. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you just two dashboards, they all, they all look similar, I'm going to drag this over here so you can see it. So the dashboard starts with an answering of a why question, why is this particular initiative located in the strategic plan? And works through that by providing some context to a resident that might not understand why a particular initiative is included in the plan. Beneath that, we have, let me see if I can, yeah, beneath that, we have our our plan progress update. Which provides our status report on on how we're doing in a in a textual format. We have what we've completed over the past quarter, as well as risks and challenges to complete the initiative. And next steps that we're going to be working through over that. In addition, at the bottom, we have analytics, so we're tying our strategic plan progress and our strategic plan initiatives to. Analytics that we've completed through our community survey, as well as additional analytics that we complete as part of our annual progress of the village. I E, building permits or revenue that we gain or or stuff like that. All those analytics are added to the dashboard that correspond closely with the initiatives, so the public can understand kind of. Why the board has shaped these initiatives into the future. And as we acquire more analytics, either through something like the streetscape or parking study or other studies that we complete over the 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 next three years. We can add those analytics to the dashboard to further engage with the community in conversations. And then ultimately, all of that, as we, as we complete that, rolls up into that progress bar that's to the right, that provides context for or for how we're doing. Located in the packet is a, is a key of what the progress means, what what the different colors mean. And and provide some context to. To the, 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 the people that are reviewing the plan about what that means for how we're doing and and to being on track. So our plan is to update this dashboard on a quarterly basis as you receive your quarterly reports. We are gonna, you know, you've gotten your initial report utilizing the dashboard. In your packet for for the regular meeting tonight. But if you've got some reaction to that report, if if you think it's too text heavy or you want us to adjust in in what we're writing, we're definitely available to take that feedback. To respond to that and and make sure that we're creating something that's valuable and visible to both you and the community. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Oh, one note, I wanted to thank Sammy Hands, our communications manager, for her efforts. In in helping us get this dashboard in place and and online, she really did a great job in assisting me in in understanding the dashboard and how we're going to be doing this into the future. So I just wanted to thank her for that. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to to answer those.
Thank you. Of the dashboard.
Me and Sammy will be the keeper of the dashboard. So the, 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 the project leads and the individual initiatives are responsible for their individual initiatives. And as they complete those or or in in, complete those extra steps, they upload that into the dashboard. And ultimately, Sammy and I review and generate those, those dashboards and and recordings that you see.
Is there a game? Our. We have all, if not. Is, could I have the motion to move to close session? Pursuant to session, see what's. Twenty one of the local. What's moving? The new second, you roll.
That's the hallways, yeah, that's the main hallways.
Yeah.
That's the hundred. That's the Rosenblatt, yeah, that's the.
Motion here. So we are. Moving to close session.